This was yours, I'll send this to you later.
That's mine too.
Mine here.
It's mine, not mine.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of this Board of County Commissioners on Thursday, November the 2nd, 2017 at 9:00 AM. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Katnick?
Present.
Commissioner Wood?
Present.
Commissioner Prince?
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith?
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Okay. The agenda has been published, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda at this time?
I...
I do not.
I, um, Chuck needs to talk to you guys about IT security thing, um, and he said he was just gonna come in sometime this morning. He said it would take about two minutes.
Okay.
About time.
We got a break, we'll mark him in. Any other changes? For the published agenda at this time, we have no old business or new business. Introduction to the audience, please.
Jackie Buebers, Sentinel.
Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
Thank you. Do we have any minutes to approve this morning?
Nope.
All right. Any Commissioner items?
Um, I just wanna ask if all of us received an email from Laura Sundrum with regards to our Lieutenant Governor. I don't know whether one of us is supposed to fill out that survey or all of us. Was that, didn't really make it clear.
I read it, the survey, I did not fill it out because I felt with bar jobs kind of in question, I didn't feel it was really appropriate. So I chose not to do it, but I did read it, I thought it was appropriate and a good survey, but I also thought it was politically motivated maybe.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I just didn't feel compelled to do it at this time.
Okay.
That's just me personally.
I didn't feel compelled to do it, Mr. Trump.
Okay.
How close do we come to mixing?
Okay. All right.
Politician.
That's all I had.
Right. I don't have anything since yesterday, other than I did get the information to, uh, Rhode and Bridge with that gentleman, Mr. Cole that we discussed yesterday, I emailed it to.
Okay, Counselor.
I finally got around to preparing the letter we had discussed a few weeks ago to Eaton Sales and Service about the fuel dispenser at the airport, um, because they were billing us for all their troubleshooting efforts, and, um, it was decided that it had already been disclosed to them, there was a problem with that valve, they had indicated that they didn't know anything about it. Um, so I drafted this letter, and if it meets with your approval, I think you'll have copies, I'll sign it, and we can have Brenda mail it out, and then I guess the question is, if we wanna go ahead and pay the undisputed amount, the $8,850, which was what the original bid was, and just keep this other part in dispute.
Hello, May. Uh, I think that would be the appropriate approach. Dallas has mentioned that the facts are appropriate in the letter, I think it's well drafted. I would be in favor of going ahead and paying the undisputed amount, and let's send them the letter and just see what happens. Just...
Plus that, uh...
Forty-six dollars.
Forty-six dollars might be learned about this morning.
Right, they added another forty-six dollars for a specific kind of fuse, is that right?
Right.
And I don't have a problem with that, so we can add that to it.
I knew that, uh, that fuse was going to be charged, and I was surprised that it hadn't been by before now, but, uh, I agree, we should pay that.
Clint, do we normally send these out, like certified with a return to make sure that they get it signed through?
I, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, we're gonna pay what we think we owe, and if they don't get it for some reason, I guess we'll know eventually, but I'm pretty sure it will get this one.
Okay. That's all, yeah.
Well, I think it's wise to pay it at this time, because we recognize that that is the amount that we owe for the fuel facility, uh, and then they'll have no common questions as to coming back for additional claims, because we already paid a bill, and that's it, so. I would make a motion that we instruct the county attorney to send this letter to Eaton Sales and Service regarding the fuel dispenser overcharges at Silver West Airport.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. More in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, same sign, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
What was that amount, $8,000?
Eight, fifty.
Plus twenty-six, you said?
Plus forty-six fifty. Copy this.
Why don't we pay that by two separate checks?
Yeah.
So there's... No, any question about it?
Well, and this one should come through our next
Okay.
bill cycle, I think. Okay, I'm going to, um, modify the order just a moment if I might. I see that we do have Chuck here.
Any wanted on the program very briefly?
Yeah.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chuck.
Good morning, Chuck.
Yesterday, I attended a cybersecurity webinar with the Secretary of State, and Homeland Security is implementing, um, across the nation, and Colorado is in on it too, a bunch of security measures to make sure that the election goes smooth. Um, there's gonna be, Homeland Security has a portal that we'll be able to dial into, it's kind of a communication thing, so if anybody has something, and they're having a problem or something, they can post it, let all the other places know about it and stuff like that. I wanna take two steps. Um, one is there's also, I don't know if you've ever, if you've heard about it, but there's a recent vulnerability that was discovered in wireless connectors. Now, I don't think we have the problem here, because mostly it affects, um, repeaters, which we don't have any. Uh, and also, the, the security that we use is still, it's still hackable, but it's not, uh, it's not as vulnerable as some of the other ones that, that they've discovered. Um, so the first thing I'd like to do on Tuesday is to disable all the wirelasses in the, in the courthouse, so that, uh, to prevent anybody from trying to connect to the network, um, wirelessly. And then we'll turn it back on. Tuesday evening, I'll need it to upload the election results and stuff like that, but, and I'll probably turn them all off like Monday, after, late Monday afternoon, make sure they're all off, so to prevent anybody from...
Four, five, three, what?
About four, yeah, I'll, I'll probably do it about four o'clock or so.
Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
From 4:00 PM until?
Until, well, and then...
Nine?
Until, uh, Tuesday, depends, I'll turn it, I'll turn it on when they're getting pretty close to, um, uh, have, with the results. Now, they don't have to, clerk doesn't have to worry about, because they're all hardwired connected, so. The only way somebody could get in here would, they'd have to be physically in the building and attached through hardwire, so, and we got security cameras and all that kinda stuff. Um, the other thing I wanna do is I'll have the network analysis software running all day, and so we can see if anybody is flooding the internet. One of the things they're mostly concerned about, Homeland Security and Secretary of State, is a denial-of-service attack, which is where they just flood the internet with something, and so you can't do your job. It doesn't necessarily hurt anything or steal information or anything, but it just, you can't get your job done.
It just overloads everything.
It just overloads everything. So with the network analysis software, I can watch for those types of things, and if I see anybody, um, using too much bandwidth in the building, I can, we can shut them down. So, um, uh, this is kind of a, they're saying this is kind of a dry run, I mean, this election's not, you know, what they're, yeah, they want presidential and congressional and that kinda stuff, but this is kind of like a dry run for next year's election and stuff like that, so, but, uh, I just wanted to let you know about those types of things.
What time would you want back home, do you think?
Oh, we can probably go back up about eight or somewhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just so that nobody has a chance to happen while they're trying to do their job and trying to up, because they have to upload stuff to the state, and we're gonna have to upload stuff, and so we can, we can turn it, and actually, they can do their stuff, because they'll be wired. They'll be wired, but, uh...
But that gives us a secure window from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM on Tuesday. 4:00 PM on Monday.
Yeah, I might, I might hook up, some of them are gonna be locked up, um, like your daughter is and stuff like that, so I may have to do those Wednesday morning, but, um, it shouldn't be any big hardship if people come into the courthouse on Tuesday and they can't use their iPads or phones or something to get to the internet, so, for one day, so...
Is it simple for us to do it, or just a big change you go down?
That's probably more probable than somebody hacking into our system, that's all.
Good for something I never would've thought of. I really appreciate you taking the force.
Yeah, the state's taking it pretty serious, going through this webinar yesterday, and so, and Homeland Security's involved in it, so...
What'd you think of the Secretary of State?
Well, I, these were IT guys.
I know, what was his IT guy?
Yeah, yeah, this was all, I, the Colorado Secretary of State, IT guys, going through this stuff, the steps that they're taking, I...
We had a good visit with the Secretary, and Pueblo wasn't a couple, three weeks ago.
Right, twenty-two.
Yeah, no, I, no, he wasn't involved in any of that stuff, so, all Gigi stuff.
Well, he mentioned security and stuff in our, in our conversations, so...
Yeah, they're taking, yeah, I'm, I was surprised at all the security stuff that they're, that they're putting in to make sure that nothing happens, and that, they'll be watching stuff too, and if they see a denial-of-service attack or something like that, they'll be able to shut it down, so...
He'll actually be here tomorrow.
Pardon me?
He'll be up here tomorrow.
Governor Will?
Wayne?
Secretary of State.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, Secretary Bill?
Oh, yeah, oh.
Forward to see you?
Hmm, good.
He's actually a former commissioner. Clerk from the Springs. Good fellow.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make you aware of that.
All right.
Thank you for the diligence.
Yes, sir.
You bet.
Okay. Bob, I had one more thing on Attorney items.
Sure, I'm sorry to interrupt, Counselor.
No, it's fine, I just, uh, I just wanted to report, I'm working with Jackie Hobby on a problem that's come up on a parcel of land, it's on South Colony Road, right up against, uh, where the National Forest starts, it's right next to the Bruiser property, I guess you probably know where that is, but, um, there was eighty acres that somehow got subdivided a long time ago, and it shouldn't have been, and it was just discovered recently. A, a land development company out of Oklahoma has acquired, there's three separate parcels that together add up to a hundred and nine acres, they acquired it for $2 million, thinking they would be able to subdivide it, and it, it can't be subdivided, so there's a threat of litigation over it, and I'm just working with Jackie on that right now, and I know the attorney in Pueblo who's representing the land company, so I'll be dealing with him on this, but I just wanted to advise all of you that that's...
Is that the old Kelling subdivision?
Uh, I'm not sure, I don't think so, I didn't see any reference to that, it's, uh...
Center of that lays, I believe that joins Bruiser on the north side, and I'm not sure.
And I'm, I looked at the map, and I saw that there's some Bruiser property there, it's just immediately to the, yeah, the north side of where South Colony Road goes up in there, so, um, but it got subdivided a long time ago, but nobody caught it back then, and it's been that way for a long time, but there's only one of those three parcels that has a dwelling on it, and under the zoning regula, or resolution, you can only have one dwelling per eighty acres, so, um, I guess, anyway, there's some legal issues there, I just wanted to advise the board that I'm working on that.
Thank you.
This may be a whole lot bigger issue than we, than we see on the surface, because I've understood from individuals, that if the, someone takes us to court on our eighty acres throughout the valley floor, that that may not withstand the challenge, and...
I've heard that tonight.
This might be the first, the first challenge of that eighty acre ruling.
And I'll have to look into that more, I've heard that, but I never researched it, I wouldn't, didn't expect it to come up as an issue, but it may with $2 million involved in the land.
And I'm not sure when that Kelling subdivision would make, it had to be, I don't know.
I think that was back before the zoning...
I think it was before zoning, so if that's the case, it was subdivided before there were any subdivisions.
Yeah, but... At least according to what Jackie has told me, her research, this was not subdivided until about 1975, I think. It was an eighty acre parcel.
Yeah, I think that, that, that piece was bigger than eighty acres.
And I'll keep you posted on this, uh, if anything else comes up on it.
Okay, good. Anything else after I cut you off?
No.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, Dallas, let's move forward to the airport report, please.
Did you want to, there's Brenda first?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, Brenda, give me a course.
Actually, I don't have anything.
That's what I got by ESP, but I guess maybe I was, wasn't sure.
Get the old guy up here.
Yeah, that's me, the old guy.
Well, it's easy to remember your email address.
Yeah. All righty. Well, we're making progress out the airport, doing this, that, and the other thing, I have a, a quickie handout for you that I didn't include in the packet, because I wanted it to be as up, up to date as possible. As you see what it is, is the, uh, oh, wait, pricing of fuel, uh, in the airports close by us, and, uh, I'll, I'll come back to that, uh, in just a minute or two. Okay, you should have a copy of my report in your packet. Uh, our monthly meeting was held October 19th, three members present, one was in, uh, Montana, I believe, and another guy had to go to a doctor's appointment. Audience introduction, we had a whole crowd of people, uh, the, most of them were, uh, a group from Cuernavada Homeowners Association, uh, so, and we approved the minutes from September 21st, and got that done. Okay. The group from Cuernavada brought a request to allow the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District to house a fire truck in the unused bay of the OMS building. The reason for this request is to lower their homeowners insurance, and they had documentation with them that would indicate if a, uh, a Class A or B pumper was in, well, nearer to their subdivision, they'd be able to enjoy almost a 25% decrease in their homeowners assoc, uh, homeowners insurance. Uh, fin, excuse me, uh, of course, finalization of that, I'm sorry, would be between the Board of Commissioners and the Fire Protection District Board, but, uh, the advisory board as a whole, uh, we agree that, uh, a pumper with foam capability would be an asset at the airport, and I've since received a report that out of the Cuernavada homeowners, there are three people that are applying to the, uh, fire department to go in training and be, uh, members of the fire department, they live out there, they'd be close to, uh, where the truck is, or would be, uh, and wouldn't have to wait for someone further out to be able to get to it, uh, that's, personally, I think it's a great idea, and, we talked to, uh, um, I can never remember Dave's name.
Toddsey.
Toddsey, yeah. Uh, we talked to him a couple weeks ago, and he was talking about, uh, what truck to put in there if it gets approved, and, uh, he said that he, he wants to put a truck in with foam capability, so, uh, uh, the fire board meets next Tuesday, Wednesday? It's the 8th anyway. Uh, and, uh, I'm going to attend that meeting, and, um, I'm gonna report to them that the advisory board, uh, agrees with the idea, and I'm hoping that I can also tell them that the Board of Commissioners, uh, are at least considering, uh, letting that happen.
Well, the one thing I see, Dallas, and I appreciate the efforts that are being made, first of all, that's going to be a very busy station, uh, judging from the number of calls we get on Highway 69, uh, a lot of time Rosita responds, gets here quicker than Westcliffe does, and from terms of car wrecks and so forth, uh, that's certainly gonna be an active, an active station.
Yes.
And this would be direct there where you have the snowplow? In one of those bays?
Yes, we, we have an unused bay that, uh, might as well use it for something, I think.
I guess the next thing I come to is probably, I appreciate your, you know, what you've done on groundwork on this, but as I look at this, uh, the next steps are going to be for us to sit down with the fire department and see what, what their thoughts are and what our thoughts are, I can't, this time, I feel uncomfortable endorsing it until we sit down and talk about it.
Right, and, and I was planning on advising them that next week, so, so you have any comments?
No, I, you're kind of exactly what I would've said, that, conceptually, I think it sounds like a good idea in cases, have a bit of an incident at the airport that needs a fire truck, um, but I don't want a fire truck that may be needed more urgently elsewhere, so I think Bob's exactly correct, we need to get a write-off, approval from the fire department, if they approve, conceptually, I, I like the idea.
Our fire department has done a tremendous job of acquiring equipment and placing it strategically around the county, and I can appreciate the savings in insurance because of the, of the response time of the fire department.
And I might add, I, years and years ago, I was a member of the fire department, and I, I saw it grow, uh, from, what, seven trucks in the county to, we've got, uh, something like nineteen now, so it, uh...
I would just like to compliment also the folks from Cuernavada who are willing to take the fire training, taking responsibility, not just saying, hey, do this for me, they're willing to step up and be part of the solution.
Right, and...
I think that's a great plan.
And when, when they came to our meeting, I suggested that to them, that if they, they could have some people close by, you know, with the training to operate the, uh, equipment. So they're doing their due dealings and such.
Well, I'm also sure though, that, very certain, that this is a result of the recruitment efforts that the fire department has been making countywide, they've been actively seeking recruits.
Right, well...
I think they played a major role in these people becoming interested.
In the past three or four months, there've been two people asked me, uh, about joining the fire department, um, and the station out in Boneyard Park has a big banner up there that says, "We need firefighters," so...
Okay.
All right. Fuel. We finally got some fuel, we ordered it and we received it October 26th, we split the load with Peterson Air Force Base, and, but we had to take 3,000 gallons. I got, uh, I got the invoice for that, uh, load of fuel. I know it's in here somewhere. It happens when you don't have your stuff all together. There we go. Uh, total on that load was $12,225.40. Uh, the, our, our fund has plenty of money to pay for that, uh, without straining anything, so, uh, uh, there'd be no problem paying for that. Uh, that, that total translates to a selling price of $4.72. And that's why I gave you the, uh, the one with the fuel prices all around us. We would like, as an advisory board, to have the latitude to kind of keep up with, uh, the three main airports that are around us, uh, being Fremont County at Canyon City, uh, the one in Alamosa, and the one in Salida. We recommend that at this point, because of how the others, uh, airports are priced, that we initially set this price at $4.60, and, uh, what we would like to do is, as the other airports buy new fuel, their prices are going to increase dramatically, because the price we paid for this load has gone up by nine cents in three days, so anybody buying fuel from today on will be paying nine cents more than we did, and what we'd like to do is, uh, those three main airports, if we can rise and fall our selling price in conjunction with them, uh, we may not necessarily want to exactly duplicate their prices, because then we might create a, uh, an idea that there's collusion going on somewhere, but what I would like to do is, uh, to kind of keep up with Fremont County, uh, in a sense that if we, if we run about 10 cents less than Fremont County, uh, as prices go up and down, uh, we would retain our own local pilots to buy fuel here, plus people won't, they wouldn't fly that far for 10 cents.
You have any thoughts, Counselor?
Yeah, just doing a quick math, it looks like our average cost on the 3,000 barrels is $4.07 a gallon.
That's correct.
So at 4.60, we're still a 53, 52.5 cent margin that we'd be making, um, and I absolutely agree with your assessment that these prices reflect purchases before the price increases, we need to be competitive. Personally, I, I agree with it, I think that's a prudent thing to do, what you're doing, even though our margins were lower than what we tried to keep it at, but it's competitive, and we'll adjust it as we see the other airports move, so it seems reasonable to me.
Don't we have listed somewhere a 50% or 50 cent margin?
Yes.
You are entirely correct, that was a, we went through this about two or three years ago, and, uh, we actually didn't have any money at all to buy fuel, make it from a general fund. So at that time, after a lot of discussion, we decided, well, the prudent thing to do was to add a 50 cent cost on to what our fuel charges were, so that we would have money to make repairs on the fuel system, we would have money, uh, for like this, uh, $8,500 and those things that have to be replaced down the road. Uh, my feeling is, at this point in time, that it's, uh, I really, I strongly support our previous position that we took as a board of 50 cents, that's fairly straightforward, and I, the other thing I'm looking at now is that, yeah, we're at 50 cents, uh, fuel prices are going up, well, if they go up a long ways, uh, pretty soon we're gonna be, our 472 is gonna be a very attractive level without lowering it in the short term, and secondly, do you have any idea how much fuel we might not sell at 472? Are we gonna, is any of that's gonna cause it, I look, I look at here and... I look at here, and we're at 470 in Canyon, 460 in Alamosa.
466 in Salida.
And 466 in Salida. So we're right there bumping in the ballpark, I think, of these of our competition. But that 50 cents, when it was set, was set with the idea that we would use it to try to improve the solvency of the airport.
Right, to pay for new fuel. Actually, it was 50 cents plus the 3.3% that world fuel charged us for the credit card process.
Right, right. And that, but that's an additional charge of, 472 is a pump price. Or is that the 50 cent price?
I calculated that with the 50 cents plus 3.3% brings it to 472 at the minimum to cover all of those parameters.
But I think, again, we can certainly do whatever these folks would like. But I think that this time, when we look at this, it was a real challenge to finally get the thing for fuel for you guys.
Yeah, we beat that up for a year and a half.
And I, at this time, am a little reluctant to mess with it.
No. Well, it's up to you as a board.
But that would be my thoughts.
I'm just going to say, I think maybe we need to analyze it with every report that you give to see where we are, you know, with the cost of fuel.
We see where we're dropping, we're not selling fuel because of the cost and because of...
I might add, excuse me, I just got a frog. I'm not contagious. We sold the last load of fuel at 417. And, you know, that covered our 50 cents plus 3.3%. During those six months or so that it took to sell that fuel, everybody else, the prices were increasing around us. We were the lowest around, except for Walsenberg, and their price hadn't changed for almost three years. They're so low that personally, I think the county is subsidizing their fuel price. So that's neither here nor there.
Without price low in comparison to the others, did we see an increase in fuel sales? What Donna is asking, and I guess I'm asking also, does a 10 cent swing or 15 cent swing make a difference on people going, well, I'm going to fly over to another place to fill up? Is that a true or not?
This year, it did not. Discounting the time when the pump was down and we couldn't sell fuel. When we got it online, we did not see an increase in traffic from anywhere outside the county, and especially from Walsenberg. There was no big influx of people coming to buy fuel at 417. It just didn't happen.
So I would also like to see, we don't need it this month, continuing, you used to give us a report on the fuel sales. So we kind of saw who was buying what. And this again gives you an idea of the service area. I'm guessing probably 70%, and that's just a guess, or a few things.
We're talking about this report?
Yeah.
Okay, this is an old one. The reason I don't have one, because we've had a problem with the computer, and I had to bring in a person for Chuck to work on it. And he's got it okay, and just got it back this morning.
That's not a problem. The point I'm going is, I bet 70% of our fuel sales are to local people.
Oh, maybe even more.
So again, at this price, I think is unreasonable. Okay, what else?
So 472 it is?
Yep, for now, I think until we have some doubt about it.
Okay, we'll set that to this morning when I get back out there. Okay, Kalen Barber, and are you all familiar with him? I was under the impression that somebody's, well, I think Jolly was going to send an email to you. Kalen Barber has been working for us out at the airport under community service. We signed him up for the insurance and everything, so he will have all covered there. And he's been working off his community service hours. He's mowed all the weeds on the place. He painted the rusty spots on the fuel tank. I mean, he didn't just paint them, he sanded it down to bare metal and like that. And the fence around the tank, he painted that thing inside and out.
Cool.
So it's looking great. And he's coming close to the end of his hours requirement, and he's already asked us that if he could, you know, just keep volunteering for us. One of the guys kind of slipped and was talking about having a paid position out at the airport sometime in the future. And Kalen heard that, and so he's, he may have that in mind. But he's a really good worker, good guy. I don't know what his offense was, but, and I didn't ask, but he's doing a great job for us.
I think you need to explain to Kalen that probably not in the realm of possibility in the future. I mean, it's tough enough to keep it going.
Way down the future, yeah.
I'm curious, what kind of spots did he paint on the tank?
I'm sorry?
What kind of spots, like leopard or red dots or targets?
They were rusty spots.
I just like to look slightly.
And they were shining for 100 feet. So, but it looks great if you have the opportunity to be out there and see how.
Sounds like he's done a wonderful job, so please convey our appreciation.
I certainly will. Also, I have coordinated with Ace Hardware to have the materials for Dr. Smith's hangar delivered to the airport when it comes in. And we'll get with Kevin and get on that. Oh, an aircraft belonging to the buyers of Wolf Springs Ranch is coming in and out, was on the airport three different days last week.
What are they flying?
They're flying a Beech B-200.
And which buyers are these?
Navajo Nation.
Oh, the Navajo Nation.
Because I understand that there was another part buying it, only part of, they only bought part of Wolf Springs.
That's correct. Two weeks, three weeks ago now, I was out at the airport doing my airport stuff, and here comes a Learjet. And I talked to the pilot, and he told me that he was part of a consortium buying the southern half of the ranch. And I said, oh, that's great. And he said, yeah, I keep an eye on the newspaper. So the ranch is evidently, it's being sold in entirety, except for being two pieces.
And what I heard, it was the eastern portion, not the southern, because the southern portions of the Navajo has seen them, I guess, because of the location of Mount Blacken, which is one of their sacred peaks.
Well, as he said, the southern half, so.
Maybe that's beyond here. I saw a jet parked on the, that was it.
Yeah, that two-engine jet. And so that will be coming in and out maybe pretty often in the future, so.
But you don't have jet fuel.
We don't have jet fuel, but for the cost of what they would buy, they can just tippy-toe down to Canyon City. It'd take us years and years to recoup the cost of putting in jet fuel for one airplane.
At one time, this is one of the things that Mr. Geifel was talking about installing.
Yeah, he's interested in that, but he's, the last I talked to him about that, he was going to get a small fuel truck for his jet plane. And I suppose he'd buy it from Canyon City and truck it up here, so. Okay, and the latitude in fuel pricing, we already talked about that. And so I'm done.
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
I noticed the other day that we have a dry box or trailer that was, I think it was setting outside in the parking area for a period of time. It looked like the same one parked alongside of a hangar. And I see that we've got another hangar with another trailer parked beside it. I'm just curious as to what we have that defines the use of that land by the hangers, because I can see down the road that becoming kind of a junkyard.
It's been a long time since I, since we put together the rules and regs of the airport. And I'm going to have to review that.
I don't need an answer, but it's just something I saw coming down the road.
That semi and trailer belonged to Bill Geifel. The other trailer, was that by the far south hangar?
No, it was midway, maybe three hangers from the, from the south end hangar. If you go three hangers north, it was parked alongside the north side of that.
I think that one's gone now.
And maybe this was, I guess it was Monday when I saw it.
I didn't notice it when I was out there Monday.
It's nothing we need now, but I'm just looking at the, the thing that caught my eye was that trailer of Geifel's. And it doesn't look very good out there as an airport feature, and I just, we'll check and see.
I'll check on that and...
You know what I'm looking at? Now, probably I was not bringing that up, I didn't.
Will, take note of that.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions from other of you?
Things are going well.
Yeah, we're getting along.
Let's just keep our dispenser running.
Yeah, well, it's been doing fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Dallas.
Thanks.
Mike, you're here, I guess, for the sheriff?
Yes. Dallas, just stick around for a second.
And we're only three minutes behind?
I'm here all day. Morning.
Hi.
As you know, the sheriff's out of town, so he asked me to come in and present this thank you letter to the board and the airport, airport board for allowing us to use the runway for our driver training. Just a brief background, to stay post-certified, we're required to have a certain number of hours of skills training a year, along with other training. So our skills fields are firearms, arrest control, and driving. And if we don't get so many hours a year, we lose our certification. So an agreement was reached where we were allowed to close the runway for a day and set up our cones and our driving track. And we were able to get everyone in our department certified, along with all the posse members, and went through our driver training program. And that's probably one of the hardest things that we do yearly to maintain, because, number one, we now have two driving instructors on our staff. But all the years past, we've had to find the training, provide it somewhere. Generally, we're driving to Fountain or Colorado Springs, we've gone to Pueblo. And then we have to work our schedules, get everybody to drive down there, because we have to use our own cars on their track. So it takes a lot of time, we pay a lot of overtime and fuel. And with this benefit, we were able to knock it all out in one day here, and it was just huge for us to be able to do that. So this was just a letter of appreciation from the sheriff and one of our driving instructors to, you know, let you know that we appreciate being able to do that. It's a safe, controlled environment, it's a nice surface, we don't have to close a street, and we could get our work done, so we do appreciate it.
Sheriff, something I agree as commissioners, this should be a thank you from the sheriff or from us?
You guys have a copy?
Is it from the sheriff or from us?
No, it's a thank you from the sheriff.
Well, where I was going with this, excuse me, was that I think it also would be appropriate with as commissioners, also sending a thank you. And you're sending it to us, but I think as the people who manage the airport, I think it would be good for us to acknowledge their effort, because how many thousand dollars did you save by having that ability? Just off your head.
Probably in overtime and travel expenses and fuel, probably somewhere around $3,000.
$3,000. Okay, so where I'm going with this, this is an additional use of that facility.
Right.
But because we had the airport out there and you were able to use it, the airport actually provided $3,000 for the service to the sheriff's office.
Absolutely.
Because of the fact that we had that facility out there. That was where I'm trying to go with, that the airport has other uses other than just lending.
Well, like I said, we travel out of town, we figure an hour and a half, we got three hours of travel time for each person that goes out of town. And sometimes that's less, but generally, that's what we're looking at.
But I think it's important to acknowledge also that they save you some money and stuff, but it's because of what they're doing, that we were able to make that contribution.
Right, and that letter's addressed to the airport authority as well, and that's why I wanted Dallas to stay and get a copy of that.
This is the first time you've used the airport?
Yeah, this is new.
So this could be an annual event?
Well, we're required every year to do it, so, yeah, we would love to be able to continue doing that. Biggest thing, it's a safe, controlled environment.
Makes perfect sense.
The other thing that our letter put into it would be the fact that it is a service to another department, and is a documented service. Something that this is what another contribution to the airport.
Overall, it's a cost savings to the county. I mean, is that, those training requirements are mandated, come out of somebody's budget, invariably, it's the big pool, you know? So it's, you know, I was a part of it. It was really nice to be able to do in-house training close, and the way the schedules were set up, we got everybody in. And we try to include the posse members in all of our skills training, but when we have to sometimes even pay other agencies to include us, then we've got to be real particular about at least getting the certified officers or required hours.
As an FYI to you, Dallas, talked to us earlier, there's been some discussion, initial discussions with the Quinavertie homeowners association and the fire district.
I heard part of that.
And we're looking at possibly stationing an engine out there, which I think would assist on response time for all of your traffic activities on Southern 69.
Yeah, because the closest thing we have out there now is the fire, the substation in Rosita. Yeah, that would be a smart idea.
So it's something that you guys would wholeheartedly endorse. I know it's a no-brainer, I'm just trying to get it on record.
Yeah, sure, I think anywhere we can provide those emergency services, and hopefully we never need one there.
Thanks for taking the time to write that letter to the sheriff and Mr. Baller.
Sure, yeah.
So it's nice to get recognized for something.
It was a huge help to all of us, so we do appreciate it.
I'd like to read a slight end of the record. To the Southwest Airport Board and the county commissioners, we'd like to take a minute and express our gratitude to both organizations for allowing the Custer County Sheriff's Office to use the airport runway for training recently. We know that the runway is not really designed or intended to be used for law enforcement driving training, but both organizations are counting us to allow us, and it worked out great. The airport offers the only area in the county that is both paved and level enough for us to safely train without significant disruption to residents and visitors. It is because of your generosity, the Custer County Sheriff's Office was able to do our training here locally rather than outside the county, thus saving on expenses such as time and fuel. We have a great community here in Custer County, with each and every one of you being a part of that community's support. It's not going unnoticed. Thank you sincerely, Shannon Barley, Custer County Sheriff. Thank you very much.
Great.
Appreciate it.
While you're here, I'm going to pass this on to you, came from Bob. I don't know if those are any of ours, but...
Okay, we'll check them.
Okay, thank you.
I'll pass it on to our fire extinguisher lady.
Do you have any ideas on the lighting, on cross lighting?
Yeah, Brad came as we were getting done, and there were, there was a ballast that was not, that needed to be replaced.
And you're talking about the ones in the...
So it's operational.
I can report on that, because of the ballast, he bypassed it, so three are working. I can report on that. Because of the ballast, he bypassed it. So, three are working. I, Jim Bradford is gonna talk to him. Dark skies may just pay to replace those, cause those are sort of outdated lights now. You could put LED lights there, but dark skies may just pay.
Yeah, cause they put those in.
Yes.
It was just an item yesterday and I'm, we gotta fix them. We're updated on it. Thanks, Mike. Okay. Public health.
Good to see me again.
Hey, how about that?
Happy to see you anytime, young lady. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, so Alyssa had her vacation last week and came back real sick. She's real sick. That's why she's not here. Um, yeah, I think she's seeing the doctor today. That's how sick she is. And she's not good at staying down. Let's see. I know you got the report. Um, I just wanna highlight, uh, we've given 307 flu shots so far this season. I, actually more than that. Last night, I did the fire station, which is not just flu, but we catch them up on their T-DAPS, their Hep A's and Bs. And, um, so that was a good outreach. We have a clinic tonight from four to six at the school, and then one again Saturday morning at the school from nine to 12. So, um, I think we're, we're, we're doing at least as well as we've always done on flu.
The last month, we were short supply of the adult vaccine.
The high dose. Yeah.
Are we okay with that?
Well, we, I've got about 79 doses. So, um, we'll, we'll see how many people come to the clinic. Um, yeah, uh, we, we had never been able to offer it before, cause it's so expensive. Um, and now that VaxCare provides the vaccine, Medicare does cover it. So, uh, we just had no idea. We didn't order enough to start. We didn't know that that many people would be interested. Um, it's a little, uh, some people think it's just, uh, a way for the drug companies to make more money. And other people really believe in it. It, ASAP says, "We don't care what you get. Get a flu shot. Just get a flu shot," you know? But the science does show that, you know, older people don't make, their immune system isn't as robust. It doesn't make as many antibodies. So, that high dose has more antigen. So, that, that encourages you to make more antibodies. And so, particularly, they say people who take a statin should get the high dose. Because a lot of your immunity works in the liver and something about the way the statin interferes in the liver. So, enough of that.
I've got a quick add to that, maybe. When you're doing this with the senior citizens, especially those that we, we see may be malnourished, do we do any kind of a handout or anything to them with the importance of nutrition to activate the immune system?
I, I would say that we don't...
I know it's something we haven't looked at, but that's something from the animal side that we've become very, very active in, in that if we don't have proper nutrition...
That's right.
Uh, we won't get the, the matching response that we would like. And I'm wondering if that might be an extra thing to think about down the road.
Sure. We, we can do that. Um, we are always doing preventive things. Uh, that's our, that's our focus. So...
You know, and that's something, you know, at least at those high-risk people, that this is really key.
Right.
At least in the near term, that you do this.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, another thing that I didn't, haven't, I don't know how much we've mentioned before, you know, the early childhood council that we just got established this summer. I don't know, is, does Kathy Clark come to your meetings? Have you met her yet? She's the newly hired director. And this is really a big win for our county, cause we haven't had this. And we have really dynamite people on that board. We're having a, um, a workshop on November 18th, Saturday morning, to like, kinda plan out the priorities for the next year. And I think that will be really good. Um, and that addresses birth or zero to age eight. So, kind of, um, an area of the county that we don't really even know how many kids we have in that age group. And we're working on trying to get some of that, those statistics.
You probably experienced us giving out Halloween candy. I never saw so many kids in that range.
In that range. Right.
Are they all Rs or not?
Right, right, right. Well, that new, we're calling it the Custer County Kids Council because Chaffey County Early Childhood Council already had the, that acronym. So, um, but, but that is really gonna be an important group, I do believe. Um, let's see, Carmelene went to that, uh, ma- annual emergency preparedness conference, which Alyssa says, "Don't worry, next year she'll go." But she had already planned this vacation prior to getting hired. So, it was nice that Carmelene could fill in for her. Um, and Kathy White came from the Office of, of Planning, Office of Partnership and Planning. I think that's what it is. Um, and she worked with Alyssa on the community assessment and our, our five-year up cycle of work.
So, I'm back here. Emergency responders conference. What's the next step in working with, with Cindy? That we, I mean, we have a close relationship already, but there may have been, is anything that may have come out of there that we should look at incorporating in the stuff? And that's just a question. I don't have an answer.
Sure, sure. Yeah. And I don't have an answer. But, um, but Carmelene, of course, will share everything that she got out of that conference.
There'd be something there that we hadn't thought about that she picked up on that we need to look at.
Sure, sure. And the deliverables for that grant are pretty clear. And, and you know, we've worked very closely with the healthcare coalition in Pueblo and our regional people there, Margaret and Jill, um, just to continue to do the training, to be, to do all the preparedness things we need to do.
And how did this, this is basically the, the same thing that, that you were running back and forth to get vaccines and stuff during the junkets fires, isn't it?
Well, that's, that's, that's one part. That's one public health duty during an emergency.
That's what I mean. But this would be part of that.
This, this conference is, is kinda the whole, the whole big, everyone from the state came to learn, you know, what's gonna happen in the next grant cycle. Are we gonna be down money? Yes. Or, what do we need to do to, you know?
And you two may already...
Continue to prepare.
Be up to date on this. But when we have a situation like that where we're getting tetanus, I believe, and what else?
Well, we, we did the tetanus vaccines. We handed out masks. You know, post-fire, it's all about food safety, about personal safety.
They had a, a process to where they go to Pueblo, they pick up the, what they need for supplies and bring it back up here, because that's a regional storage depot or something. And we get down, sometimes you get a little deep in the weeds. The weed can get down to, to, some of these cases may be something that, that has to be protected by law enforcement. If it is a, a very serious epidemic.
Right, right. That's like in our, in the, in the big public health, um...
Right, if we have a public health disaster.
Yep, that was part of that.
Right, right. Guard the antibiotic on the way out.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I know there was just one or two other things I wanted to highlight. Um, oh, I know, you asked about the tobacco grant the last time. Um, Alyssa said, "We are doing a partnership with Fremont County at this point to hire someone to do the county-wide assessments using that." And that's the only part we can really do so far is the assessment. But I think it assesses both, you know, like, how many tobacco users in each county, how many retail sell tobacco things, what, what kind of impact it has on the, the economy, all that kinda stuff.
My biggest concern, I just didn't want it to go by ways.
It's not gonna sit there. No, no. And, and they have a really dynamite new director down in, um, Fremont County, too. So, that is helpful. And I know they're doing a lot more with Mike Oral and the Health Connector for the four different counties. So, that's, that's really good. Cause we shouldn't always work alone. And if they can share this person they hire to do the, both assessments, that will work out really well. So, any questions?
I guess a couple of things that come to mind. First of all, in miscellaneous, um, I don't know, we're working these areas. We have been and we will continue to. But I would be curious if Alisa had any additional ideas regarding suicide prevention and awareness. Something we can talk about in the future.
Absolutely.
But to me, that's a, of this conference, that would be a key takeaway for me. Uh, and the, the other comment that I have, I shared this with my wife last night. And I said, "Our school nurse, uh, saw 326 students in the clinic over the last month. And her response was wow."
Yeah, yeah. Um, she, that Carmelene, I cannot tell you how good she is. Um, and, uh, you know, any school nurse will tell you, some of the kids that come, they're called frequent flyers, you know? They have, there's a reason they come, though. Maybe it's an emotional need. Maybe it's some other, some problem. So, she's vital to know and to work with the teachers and the parents in those cases. Then, there's just every little thing you can imagine. And big things, too, you know? And she handles them all so well. And she, she is working on, I think you saw it here, um, the immunization data for the December 1 deadline. Um, I contacted our childcare providers. They do not have enough children to have to report. So, they won't be reporting. Um, but the preschool does. And I will help the preschool director do that reporting. Um, and I think this year, I mean, Carmelene's got that school in such better shape than it was a year ago, that, um, I think that our numbers will be really good. We still have a lot of people who exempt, but you are still in compliance as long as you sign an annual exemption. So, um, so we will look, we will really be in compliance.
My daughter's a second grade teacher and she loves Carmelene.
I know.
She said she's awesome. She gives us great support.
She is. I, um, yeah, we are really, really lucky to have her. So, and she does great work for us. You know, it's so seamless. She, she sends the kids letters home saying they need immunizations. She works with us on Fridays. She helps give them, you know? Um, everybody loves and trusts her. So...
Well, and that's, I think, an example of a very successful partnership.
It was. It absolutely is.
We reached out. We needed to fill in need. And I commend the other board members at that time for...
Yes.
Something we felt would work. And this is showing.
Me, too.
We did a, a good decision. Thank you for all...
And thank you for hiring Alyssa, cause she's doing great.
Let me ask one quick question before you go. Um, yesterday, we approved $1,500 for the weight kiosk. I'm just curious, how many people, you may not know, and it's fine if you say, "I don't know." But, I mean, are we talking 10 people use it, 100 people use it, 200, 500? I mean, how many people use that?
I wanna say we have in the 80s.
Okay.
But don't quote me on that.
It's fine. It's very significant. That's all I really care about.
Right, right, right.
I didn't wanna keep paying that money for three people.
I know. Right. And I think that, I mean, in an ideal world, we need to get some stakeholders in a community to say, "It's valuable. People want it. I am a, you know, wealthier business person and I'm willing to help support it or our organization or whatever." But that takes a, that's a lot of hard work. And, and so, so at some point, we're gonna keep trying to, to try to get some stakeholders.
How about, uh, like the local insurance company as a stakeholder?
That, that, that's a great idea. That's a great idea, you know? Um, and I, I mean, I just, I don't know who else might. But we need to start doing some of that outreach. Um, because that's really the way to sustain it going forward. Okay?
And we have our own poster adult.
We have many. We have a lot of them.
No. Yes, it is my poster child. He's our poster adult.
I mean, believe it or not, I was fatter at one time.
Love it.
All right, we'll stay healthy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wash your hands often.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a 10-minute, uh, last, if we know. Our next scheduled report, would you like to have a brief break?
Love to.
Okay. We're up and running. And the next we will have will be human services.
I guess I'll have to, let me call Laura. Okay.
Virginia was right when she called it close.
Yeah. She's on her way.
Well, you've had a good year so far in 30 seconds.
Yeah, they, um, it's been...
Hello, 200 grand already? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys today?
Good.
All right.
What's good news?
Don't we tell you good news? Well, I don't know if I have any good news. I don't really know that I have any bad news. So, I guess that's good. That, that's...
Good news is that there's no mail.
Now, I don't really have any bad news. And you've got your reports and I haven't even had a chance to... Now, we look at them. But, I mean, we did them. We're okay on the first page. There's no problems there unless anybody has any question. I know that report's confusing, but...
I'm sorry. I'm certain I've asked this question multiple times.
You go right ahead.
What does CSBG stand for? When I was going through this, I thought, I can't remember.
Community Service Block Grant. Community Service Block Grant. Yep. And we got money. So, we've been, uh... Yeah, and you're not gonna see it on this one. But next in October, we, we did a lot. And so, this one, we only did one, but, um, we did a lot. So, that'll show up next month. We did amazing. Okay.
I guess I did get that first page.
This, this big one here?
No, I'll go through here. I don't.
No.
I'll just look at hers for a second.
Okay.
Continue onwards.
Well, yeah, if you, oh, okay. So, do you, if you have any questions on that page, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But we're, we're doing okay on that. And that's through the end of December. And we're fine. They don't have any big glaring error, I mean, red flags or anything. So, everything is going good there.
Foster care, is that a calendar year or fiscal year or...
Uh, well, this, this report here is on calendar year. But I get an allocation, which is on the next page, and that's on a fiscal year. So, that makes it very confusing. Cause we try to keep everything as confusing as we possibly can in, in our world, let me tell you. And then community service block grants, even on a, well, it's on a calendar year. They finally got that on a calendar year. Uh-huh.
Looking at foster care.
Okay.
Okay, this report, I looked at, I compared it to the July report. This is the August report.
Okay.
No, not fine. But I'm looking at the alloc, the budget. You've almost, you spent less than 30% of the budget through eight months of the year. And I guess the question I had, and this is not a criticism, it's just a question. Why wouldn't we be close to like 80%? Why wouldn't we not have spent more?
Um, the foster care, because I, because we get 80, we get a 20%.
Reimbursement?
Yeah.
Faster.
Because 80% of it's paid by the camp, by the state. So, on here, what you're seeing actually is, um, the 20% that we actually ended up paying. Are you looking on the first sheet?
I'm looking on your first sheet. The one above doesn't have it.
Okay, okay.
And I'm looking in the whites, this third section down, the white one, it says foster care.
Yeah, and it says...
And all the way to the right, it says 29.62%. And I'm assuming that's from January 1st through August 31st.
Right.
Eight 12ths of the year. And I see only, less than 30% of the budget spent. I'm just wondering if, and this is just a thought. I mean, I'm sort of not criticizing.
Yeah, no, no.
Are we giving out, I mean, is there more money to be given out for foster care that we haven't given out?
Oh, oh, no. Oh, 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 no. Oh, oh, no. No. I, I have to mitigate every year to the state to get enough money to bail me out, because I'm over in foster care. So, the answer to that is no. So, I don't know. We'll have to look at that and try to figure out what we can do to make that look, look better.
Another part of this, so, is that we have to have the appropriation. So, you can pay foster care. You have to be paid on a timely basis. And then when we get down to the end of the year, and we have the arbitration, then we get that money back. Or we may get some back to help us reimburse what we originally spent.
And, and part of it is, cause it's so complicated. Foster care, what, what you're seeing there is just the payments that we paid out for foster care. Like if we have kids in placement. What you're not also seeing here is a lot of the other stuff that goes into it. We have the little thing called random moment sampling that hits us. And that comes out of our full line item that the state has. So, there's stuff, and all this is showing is the number of... So there's stuff, all this is showing is the number of payments that we paid out for kids in placement, basically. That, that's what that's showing. So it's not showing all of the other stuff that goes on behind the scenes that we are not seeing, some of those supportive payments and stuff that we do. They don't show up on this thing. So we may need to figure out something.
It's okay. I mean, you don't have to change the report because it's a question.
No, I understand.
I just didn't understand because I see all the others are at sixty percent of budget, seventy percent of budget, and that makes sense at the end of August. And this one was so low, I was wondering, wonder why?
Yeah.
It just, it was a red flag to me. I was just.
Well, and I'm looking at September. You're looking at?
I'm looking at expenditures and unexpendable balance for August two thousand seventeen. Am I not looking at the wrong one?
You should be looking at September.
No. This says expenditures and unexpendable balances for August twenty seventeen.
That's what we got sent to us.
Well, why does mine say September?
So what's your percentage then?
Because they're different.
Well.
What's your percentage on your page versus what we have? We've got twenty-nine point sixty-two percent. What do you have?
When I compared it to the month before, it just jumped out at me.
She's got thirty, I can't see it.
See, yeah, but that, I.
So that's what we were given.
Well, how, why does mine say September?
Because yours is probably the accurate, the complete report and this is maybe from the previous year.
Well, but other pages say September.
Yeah.
But on the same report, this is what we're sent.
And I just assumed August because I know you do so much state reporting, I figured you're a month behind.
See, this says, that says month of September.
Yeah.
That one just must have got sent wrong.
Well, that, yeah.
Do those numbers compare or are they different?
No, they're, no, they're different because it's.
Why don't we just get, ever make us three copies of that?
Yeah, I can make you three copies of that. Yeah, I'm like, I don't understand why.
Here comes our.
Yeah, and this one, and does the rest of it say September?
The rest of them say September.
The rest of it's October.
On that one? Oh, well, that would explain it. Okay, okay. All right, well, we will get you an updated one on that. I'm sorry, but I'm still, but, oh, I'm, yeah, but I will.
Well, in the past, we've had some of these that just had their own date. They were on, had to change.
Right, and, yeah, and so I've gone through and checked to make sure, but apparently when he sent it, he didn't send the September one, he sent the August one or something because I'm like, no, we're in, we should be doing September. But I see what you're saying on that, so I'm gonna check that out because now you've got me confused, okay? No, no, no.
It was just, when I compared it to the previous ones, it looked out of place to me.
Okay, well, I'm gonna check that out because now I'm all confused too.
My copy error isn't right, so.
And when we were doing this, we had a lot of stuff going on and so I think somewhere along the line, even though I had checked it and everything was right, and he goes, "Okay, I'm gonna send it now," so I don't know how in the world.
But you're still doing, it's not that much of a percentage.
No, it's not that much of a percentage. No, you're absolutely right. So I, because I'm looking at that and it's thirty-nine.
Maybe you could send us a copy.
Well, I'm gonna look at it and, and, yeah, I'll look at it.
Because on our copy, there's some of the stuff that didn't come.
Yeah, I will look at that. And like I said, when we were trying to do this report, we had a massive thing going on and so we were trying to get this report sent to her and we were trying to deal with all this other stuff and so somewhere along the line, that just did not come over, but I'll, I'm gonna look at it.
And it made a major issue?
Well, no, but if it's not right, I need to, I need to get it fixed.
Thank you.
Yeah, because everything else, yeah, you're right. Everything else looks great and so why is it not like that? And I know this one's right, so, okay. I will, I will check that out.
And I think, and the numbers you're looking at there, Jay, if we look at the bottom line on that section, we have a total of twenty percent. Her year-to-date expenditures as of the end of September is seventy-nine point two. That's three-fourths of the way through the year, so we, you know, we're about on budget.
Yeah, we're a little bit.
Those three sure total down here.
Yeah, but I'll look at that because I don't, I'm not sure about that. But I will look at that, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
No, yeah, that's right, no?
Yeah, well, yeah, now, in energy, we got our, we got our, um, yeah, so.
Everything else.
Everything else, yeah. Everything else is September and stuff. We had one last payment for EOC and we used exactly all of our money.
She had a hundred percent.
Yeah, we used all of our money. So we're, yeah, oh, yeah, we always use all of our money. And they gave us more money this year, which you will see, they gave us three thousand more this year. But they lowered the amount that we can pay out per person, so, or per household. So they kind of hit us on that, so, but we're, we have our CSBG grant and we're working with that too, so between the two of them, we're able to keep people going.
And we may see then a, look at our food assistance benefits. As you move into November and December, if I remember right, we always see an increase during this time period.
Brenda, did you, did you send them this MOU?
Okay. This MOU thing here, they are still, this is still not final. They sent this out because they sent it to me and said, "We're sending this to you because it's probably going to be sent to your commissioners and if they're going to ask about it," they're still working on it. They are still going at it about certain terminology and they're having a meeting. It was either, I think it's today, and they're still going to discuss this. So wanted to let you know if you have it, it's not, it's not final yet and so we don't need anything signed or anything. They're still working with it.
Good.
Okay? These I just got the other day and I was gonna get them to Brenda, but like I said, we had a lot going on there and I didn't get them, but they're not due until January first. So I'm gonna go ahead and give them to you now and I thought I brought one for you, but apparently I didn't, but I'll get one for you because I thought I had four with me. But this is that merit system certification that we do every year, but I will let you guys, like I said, we don't need it signed now. It's not until January. So, and I'll get you one because I had one copied there. I don't know why I didn't get it, bring it with me, but you just need to look at that and it's, what this is, is when we went out of merit system years ago. Merit system was set up so that everybody in the state, regardless what county you worked for, if you were a maintenance, income maintenance tech, you got the same pay as somebody that worked in Denver County, if you worked in Custer County. Well, when they got ready to merit system, they have to have a system that shows that the salaries are equitable across the state. So this is a form that they have you sign saying that you have done wage surveys and everything else to make sure that our salaries are equitable across state.
And if we're willing to reduce your salary, is that where we come?
Yeah, no.
I was teasing. I was teasing.
Yeah, no. We've had conversations about what if they don't sign it? And nobody seems to give us an answer on that. Okay, because, you know, I'm like, you know, I don't know what to tell you on that, you know? Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, I don't. I think it's.
I guess the thing that bothers me on this one is that Custer County certifies that it is in compliance of the principles and criteria. I just filled in the blank there on the last page.
Yeah, I know.
And, and for the reporting period, well, we don't have, I mean, who's gonna do, pay the cost of surveying all the similar counties?
I know.
To see if we're in compliance?
I know. I, I know. And this has been brought up numerous times, numerous times.
No, we just.
That that, you know, and we did one, oh, gosh, Rick Faring was still the county administrator.
I was gonna say, oh, but that was back in the early nineties.
Oh, long time ago, long time ago. And there hasn't been one. I think at one time, some counties were using a pay thing that CCSI did, but.
Other salaries, because then they do an annual salary review of everybody.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that's what some of the commissioners have been using.
I think that would be.
Yep, and, and.
Would be what we would use as a baseline to compare it from who we do. I don't have it either right now, but it would be.
Yeah, but I wanted to get those to you and I'll get you yours, Clint. And because they're not due right now, they just, I just, they just sent them out.
I'm gonna ask that you get one to Donna also.
Oh, okay, okay, sure. Yep, I can do that. And so, yeah, so we don't need to worry about this MOU yet and I just wanted to get this to you guys right now. Belipa's officially started yesterday, but anybody that was on last year was already been brought in, applications per mailed and we've got almost a hundred of them already. We usually do around two hundred and something, so we've got almost half of them already. Of course, we've had computer problems, notices that are supposed to be, well, they sent out notices, they didn't send them to people, they sent them to us. Some of them ran three times and they were all incorrect, they had the wrong dates. So now they send them again, so Rhonda's been going through notices going, "Okay, this one's wrong, this one's wrong, this one's wrong." So, yeah, it's just another happy day. But we're like, I don't think they check this stuff, you know? I mean, my gosh, but anyhow, so we're moving along.
If any of you are wondering, why don't we have our office configured as it is, there's no place in it to run around in circles. You just have dead ends.
We did request a padded room.
I do. I would like one someday. And this is one of them again, so, yeah. Oh, gosh. Okay, does anybody have any more questions?
I have just one question. I may have four of us. Confidentiality, I know everything you do is so confidential. Do you feel you have sufficient confidentiality?
No.
Okay.
No.
Is there anything we can do to help you with that?
I don't know.
At some point, we're hoping that we revamp everything and give you new offices and stuff that's way down the road. Is there anything that we can do to help you this point? Because I do worry about confidentiality.
Yeah, we do too. And we try to, you know, sometimes if nobody's in the break room, we go into break room.
That we use downstairs.
We use downstairs. We do, we have, we'll have a meeting next week or something. We'll be downstairs there. So we try to utilize that, but sometimes we just, yesterday I just, we had people here, we had people here, somebody came in, so Stacy took them to the break room because we didn't have police lights to go. So, yeah, it is, it's, before it wasn't such a big issue, but we're getting busier and it's.
Four hundred and fifty, almost five hundred people?
Yeah, so it's just, yeah, it's crazy. And so, yeah, it is an issue and we just try to figure out some way to do that and move people around.
A lot of creativity in there.
Yeah, yeah.
If you could, if something that you think we can help you with, please bring it to us because I'm concerned about this.
Yeah, yeah, we are too. We really are.
Can we? Well, first of all, the room that the sheriff office has over in the, is, you know, available for emergencies.
Well.
I mean, the schedule has to vary.
Yeah, we, we have, we use that if we have to interview kids because there's cameras in there. And we had to, we have to set that up and we have to do that and we've been doing some interviews and, I don't know, it was not yesterday, I think it was the day before, Stacy was over there and they got done with the interview and they were just talking, her and the parents were talking and da, 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 and then Jim came out and said, "I really need you to leave because we've got somebody coming in." And it's like, "Okay," you know? We're trying, we're trying to get out, you know? So, yeah, so, you know, it's a space, but, but it's, it's not easy, you know, so. But we, they, she did get done what she needed to do and they were just kind of, you know, parents asked her a question outside and that's when she was answering, that when Jim came out and goes, "I got somebody coming in and, you know, they won't come in if you're here." And she goes, "Well, we're, we're leaving now," so, but, so we do use that, you know? We have to get it scheduled and we have to make sure that.
You're interruptible.
I know.
Even though you're there, you're only temporary.
I know, so, you know, so, but, but, yeah, I'm concerned about it too and we're just trying to figure out, you know, something that we can do about it, but we just don't have a lot of space and I'm just, you know.
One other thing is, I've thought about trying to find something off-site, depending on the transportation issues.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then people know what's there and they reckon there's a car out front and models and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, this is true. And we are, for one of our meetings, we've been using Solvista over there. They have a back room and so we're gonna, we have a meeting tomorrow and we'll be using that one.
Where's that?
Solvista.
Solvista, over here on the corner. Yeah, and they have a room that we can use sometimes if they're not using that room too, so we're trying to work it around, but, yeah, I know.
Thank you for all of your efforts.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I will bring that.
Okay, I'll be here for a while.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, and I'll get one of those to Donna too, that.
I have, see that completes our read. I wish to have treasure yet, ten thirty. Well, there she is, I'm sorry. Throw a rock at me, dear, and I'll maybe pay attention.
That's all right. I had those class for you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. I apologize for that remark. I didn't mean to call you, dear, I.
No, you're good.
Because we're old, we grew up together.
Hey, I don't have a problem with it.
Oh, I don't want to step across that line. Okay, what do we have for us?
Got the old report.
I see we're kind of getting down to ten thousand?
Yeah, ten thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. We're gonna look at it about the third week of the month and we'll try to, we'll get on the agenda and last year we did forty thousand, so we'll look forward to that.
Anything else for us? I didn't see anything that was just dumped out at me, but.
I'm still reading.
I've got that in this pile or something, which I just saw.
Yeah, I just thought you had it.
I'm gonna say under lodging and tourism, that looks like it's a good sign for them.
Yeah, it does. It looks like their collection has been pretty, pretty good this year.
We'll be happy to see that.
I think their word's getting out more and they're collecting more than what they were before. You know, they had a real issue getting them to collect at first.
Yeah, that pillow tax.
It's like forty thousand, I think.
That's the peak of the season. Yeah, I was amazed at how much it was up.
I don't see any anomalies in here. Am I missing anything or is everything look pretty straightforward?
It's pretty straightforward, yeah.
Okay.
Now, you'll see that that seventeen fifty fifty-four is still in there. That was, that order, that will go out and sell it.
Yeah.
Till the end of this month, it'll go out.
That's fine.
The one thing I mentioned earlier to Kelly, but I'm surprised at the clerk fees over two hundred thousand already.
You know, that goes up and down, it fluctuates. You know, that goes up and down. It fluctuates. And that won't stay, because if you notice transfers, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
This is right. Well, on the title, it says October one, twenty seventeen, or, oh, October thirty-one. Yeah, we're all right, okay, excuse me. So, this is, now, wait a minute. Is this a, where do I see what the fees are for that month?
For the clerk? It's the ending balance, two thousand and nine dollars, five hundred and seventy dol, uh, two hu, two hundred and nine, five seventy-eight, twenty-eight.
That's what she took in last month.
That's what the ending balance is.
But you have a beginning balance of a hundred and sixty-four.
Right, it fluctuates. You see, we saw, we've sent out a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two, ten. She collects it, we send it out to the state and to West Cliff, so we're...
This is, okay, this is license fees, Mar, uh...
Marriage license, copies.
Mm, copies, um, my fees, that I get, uh, collect the fee for collecting taxes, um, the clerk's fees, um, surveys, maps.
I was trying to make something else out of it. It's a straight call. An additional conservation trust is...
Twenty-two, three fifty-two, fifty-five.
We had nothing on activity in that account.
It's a, it's a quarter payments. Quarter payments. We get quarterly payments.
Yeah, right, yeah. I said earlier, I only, I think I saw, was that ten thousand initially, huh? And you told us. I'm good with it.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm getting there. Thank you.
Okay, well, good work, thank you.
I might not know you here, but I tell you goodbye. Thank you. Okay. I think that completes our reports. Uh, I have one item on their old business that doesn't appear specifically here from Cindy's meeting yesterday. She gave me a copy of the Senate Dental Agreement on the E nine-one-one. So, some changes that had occurred in here, basically, the two checks, two signatures on the checks.
Right, and, and I was gonna ask if Clint, do you review this E one-one, E nine-one-one?
No, I've never seen that.
Because it commits commissioners.
Okay, I've never seen anything on that.
I think you should look at it, because we have to sign off on some.
Well, I think what we'll do then is just table this till our next meeting.
Well, I wanna bring that up this afternoon and say that it should pass.
Right, but we're not...
We can't sign it.
We can't act on it now, so we gotta, we gotta act on it, but not today. I'm gonna give this to you, or maybe you got a copy from Cindy?
I haven't gotten anything yet.
And if you get electronically, that'll be fine, if not, you've got a draft she gave me yesterday. Okay.
They're, they're meeting today, Clint at three-thirty, and that's on the agenda to review.
Okay.
But it, it hasn't been looked at formally as a committee yet.
I will take a look at it. I'm gonna head into Pueblo since I'm done here, but I'll let you know if it's okay. I'll look it over before I go. I have another old, was anybody having new business?
A question. When is, uh, when is our next BOCC meeting?
Twenty-two.
Okay, and by then, you'll have, you'll have, that is enough time to certify the election, if, okay.
Well, yeah. We said the sixteenth. Hopefully, that has changed, um, because of how we have to do our audit now. So, I'm hoping to have it certified on the seventeenth, but if not, um, uh, that following Monday or Tuesday of the week of Thanksgiving, so that'd be the twenty-first or twenty, yeah.
So, what we've done in the past, this is different, because we have, you know, a number of officials, but if the recall passes, uh, then the new commissioners will be sworn in at the first meeting.
Yeah, I would say that's probably how that works.
And I'm thinking that the proper protocol would be, we call a meeting order, we, we go through the pledge and so forth, and then we swear.
Swear and, yeah.
And then turn it up. That answer your question?
I think that's the day before Thanksgiving.
Anything else? Other comment, any others? Tom's studying his checkbook, so...